... hour for the meeting. We certainly appreciate each of you being here tonight. We are absent both Mr. Hilt and Mr. Reader who both are battling some type of illness and so we do have a quorum at this time so we'll, having called the meeting order, I will have the invocation and pledge. Would you stand and join us please? Father, we come to you and ask tonight for wisdom, Father. We know that your word says that if we lack wisdom, we should ask for it and that you would give it to us liberally. So Father, we ask that you would lead and guide our minds, that you would help us, Father, to do what is best for the people of Newberry County and help us to glorify your kingdom through our service. Lord, we ask that you would be with Mr. Hilt and Mr. Reader and that you would heal them and bring them back to health and restore them back to this board. Lord, we ask it all in the precious name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, is there a motion that we adopt the agenda as published? Motion by Mr. Sees, second by Ms. Airwood. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands? Opposed likewise? That carries unanimously. We have an opportunity now to celebrate the employees of Newberry County. They are without a doubt the heartbeat and backbone of Newberry County and so we're so thankful for them so we're going to ask them if they are here tonight, if they would come forward and allow us to present this certificate to them. Um, I don't trust me to over-molot once. Kenny Shealy, 15 years.
Kipson Beager, unfortunately, but he is very appreciative of this and he also just was promoted to chief of Praiser for Newberry.
Oh, wonderful. That's awesome.
15 years, they ain't off.
That's great. That's great. Did you get that too? Laura Lane, 25 years. She started when she was two.
Yeah, I didn't get a promotion, but I'm...
So thankful for you, Tom Turner. Can you get a picture with her? All right. If you hang out, we're going to get a picture with everybody.
Okay, one thing to say about Laura. When Laura get here on July 1st, that means the day we had our first bomb grab, our last one.
That makes McKeever when they survive in person, right? Teresa Ball. Is she with us? All right. Daquan Mitchell, five years. I remember him when he was a little buck when he first walked in. Congratulations. All right. Thank you for your service. If you would stay a year with Laura, we'll get her. Ten years later, 15 years. He is not with us, I see. Amber Lynn Silver, 20 years. Not here with us?
I think they both were.
Okay, that's it. All right. So can you get on the other side and can we get one more picture of them? Anything either one of y'all want to say?
I'm appreciative of all the, everything that, you know, you all buy for us.
Thank you. Daquan?
I'd say it's been an honor to work in Newberry County here under our Chair, Sheriff Foster, prior Chief Jonathan Hird, and many of you here on daily basis. It's been a good time to work for and I just want to say thank you.
We're very proud of you. It's great to take a moment and do that and I appreciate the words that y'all shared about each one of our awardee, uh, recognitions. Item number three on our agenda is public appearances. First is Ben Setzler from the Soil and Water Conservation District.
Good evening, council members. Appreciate you having me here. This is a continuation of a kind of quarterly report. I think y'all asked us to do it for a year and here we are at about two. So I guess we'll just keep on doing it at this point. I know Mr. Sees, I don't think we've had the pleasure of meeting yet very briefly and as a refresher for all of you, the Soil and Water Conservation District is the local leg of a three-legged stool on conservation issues. On federal, you have the Natural Resource Conservation Service, on state level, Department of National Resources, and we serve as the local leg. So our job, very, very short version, is to communicate the local needs of our county to state and mainly federal because as y'all know, the federal has all the money and we try to direct where that money goes into county to satisfy our conservation needs. Outside of that, anything that helps preserve, protect, or make wise use of our county's resources, that's where we try to be found. I want to touch on finances here a little bit. I talked about this probably about a year ago, that we were fighting to get an additional $10,000 from the state government for every county in South Carolina. Newberry is on the forefront of that effort. I was actually and still am serving as the chair of our state legislative committee and that was successful. Now, not to beat a dead horse because I think I may have told you I was successful, but we just got that money about two weeks ago. So additional $10,000 coming to every county in the state, including Newberry. That goes a long way in helping an organization like ours that does not have a huge budget. Grants. We talked about grants some before. In the last year or so, I had Krista put together a few numbers. We're at about $34,000 that we bought into the county in grants in the last year. Now, we've talked a little bit before about a feral hog grant. That's nearly a $300,000 grant. I'm not including that money in that $34,000, but just to give you an idea, in the past year or so, that's been about another $60,000 that we've bought into the county with grant money and we expect at least another $50,000 before the year is over and that will kind of wrap the feral hog grant up. So we're well over $100,000 in grant money for the past year. On top of that, contributions and donations, including... year. On top of that, contributions and donations, including a generous donation from the county to go towards our fair last year, our, have topped fifty thousand dollars. So, pretty proud of our fundraising efforts. Uh, they've gone a long way, and we hope y'all are feeling the impact. Uh, some recent events that we've done, we had our movie night at Piedmont Tech. We had about sixty people come, showed Yogi Bear. Kids really enjoyed it. Uh, we try to find ways to involve kids in a way they're gonna enjoy. The movie has conservation elements in it, but it's, you know, not really in your face about it. Had a good time, had concessions done by the Girl Scouts, all proceeds went to their troop. Uh, we had a team up to clean up. Seven counties across the upstate got together, including Newberry, tried to clean up some of our roadways. I know y'all never see litter on our roads, but, uh, uh, did some, uh, some damage on that. I think, uh, seven counties combined cleaned up, I misread this at first, I thought it was sixty-one hundred, sixty-one thousand pounds of trash in one day. Um, Samsung, Cipro, Kamatsu, and many community groups joined us here in Newberry for that. Had a good turnout, picked up a lot of trash, hopefully making our roadways a little bit cleaner. We just awarded four one-thousand-dollar scholarships, going to students pursuing a degree in some kind of environmental or agricultural sciences. And we have a, started using, we have a burn trailer, and we've entered a partnership with five counties to, uh, encourage prescribed burning. You join the association for fifty dollars, you can use the trailer as much as you want. It's a great deal for anybody that does any kind of prescribed burning. Um, upcoming are two big events, I got a few more I could talk about, but to keep this short, uh, the Conservation District's big event is camp conservation. We have that coming up, June nineteenth through twenty-third. Uh, forty-five kids registered, and we have a waiting list. We are at capacity, we're excited about that. Uh, we've raised thirty-five hundred dollars for that camp, plus a thousand dollar grant. Now, what that allows us to do is keep the week-long cost of the camp for the kids very low, less than ten dollars a day, a great deal, and that allows us to, to bring in kids from any economic background where they can come out, enjoy the camp, they go fishing, they shoot bows and arrows, they see live coyotes, all kinds of stuff. They love it. We have a lot of kids come back every year. Um, our big thing we have coming up, August twenty-fourth through twenty-seventh, mark your calendars, Keep Newberry County Beautiful Summer Fair is coming back. Um, last year, you know, we had it at the fairgrounds, we couldn't make that work this year. Prosperity has welcomed us with open, uh, open arms, uh, kind of behind their police department there where they had the ball fields, that's where the fair will be this year. Um, like I said, that's, uh, August twenty-fourth through twenty-seventh. We have more rides coming this year than we had last year, more vendors coming, more food trucks coming, gonna be even bigger deal. Last year, we had over ten thousand people come to that fair. A lot of people from surrounding counties, several people from out of state we talked to. We hope to beat that number this year. Um, those are our big things we've got coming up, the things we've just had. So, what questions can I answer from y'all? What problems can we help solve?
Man, that's a, a, exciting report, man. We appreciate that more than you know. It's a lot of good stuff going on there, and we appreciate y'all's efforts.
Ma'am, thank you for having us. Y'all call us if we can help you in any way.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the, uh, it's listed on our agenda is the residents of Sunview Road. I'm not sure how many plan on speaking, so we would kind of hold to our, our normal rules of public appea, uh, public appearances and public comments to approximately three minutes per person, please. So, who will be first in speaking? Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen of County Council and esteemed members of our community, I stand before you today to address a matter of utmost urgency. We gather here to discuss a piece of property that has become unfit for human habitation, posing a severe threat to the health and well-being of its residents in the entire community. This is a piece of property that, just as you turn on to Sunview Road, uh, you starting the pictures?
Could you, okay, start the first one?
You can, and I'll, if y'all wanna look as I, as I speak, whatever.
That'd be great.
All right. Uh, to Newberry County Council, we're writing to you today to express our concerns about a property located in our community. Uh, title thirty-one, chapter fifteen dash, thirty-one dash fifteen, three-twenty of the South Carolina Code, governed body of a county may use its police powers to repair, close, demolish dwelling that is deemed unfit for human, human habitation due to various conditions. I'm not saying this place should be torn down or burned down, it just severely needs to be cleaned. It, they have no running water there. There's, uh, one male in the house with three pit bulls, and then there were two men in a utility building there to the side of the property. And I've talked, I've talked with D Heck. D Heck has come out there and cited, and cited them for a sewage, because there's a sewage smell. So they came out and cited him. He's on a well pump, he's not on Newberry County Water and Sewer. His, his well is down, so there is no water there. Uh, we've had the police down there, that's the cabin. You see the, the flex hose that's hanging out in front? Well, back this winter, there's a grill that sets up under that flex hose with a, with a fire in it, and it, and it was running through that side window. As you'll, the next picture, you can see how it dropped down. It was in that side window. From my deck to where I can see this, it's approximately about fifty to sixty feet. And it's right on the road frontage. Uh, but you've, you've got people living here that, I feel sorry for them, I don't know what to do for them. They, uh, they round, well, we, we've had a bunch of theft, and I have to go back, we've had a bunch of theft. I was broke into, uh, a bunch of houses have been broken into. Propane tanks have been stolen, tools, guns. There's, uh, on March the seventh, Newberry County Police came and added that utility building where the two, the daddy and the son, Joe Johnson and Daris Johnson. Daris is in jail. They, I don't know, it's four or five guns they took out of there. He's still in jail. That's the front of it. Well, since that picture's been taken, they've added two more pieces of furniture out front. That is a pa, a piece of property that is across the street, directly across the street. They have a piece of styrofoam set up there where they shoot at it, at the piece of styrofoam directly across from that piece of property. And when you look on the mailbox, it says thirty-six. When you look at the Newberry County Assessor's website, it says twenty-six. What I think that is, is what you see in there, used to be a mobile home that sat on that cement slab there. Well, it's been removed. They, at one time, about eleven months ago, he put a camper there, he let somebody, he was charging the rent, and it was living out of a camper. And the county came in and eventually got, you know, moved him on. There's the camper that, that we're speaking about. So he just keeps going from a camper now to the utility building, and as you can see, it's, uh, it's a sight for sore eyes. I'm sure my three minutes is up.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Who's next?
Yes, let me give you your captain.
Okay. Thank you so much. Mm-hmm. Is there somebody else that wanted to address council tonight from the group?
It's six, sixteen.
How you doing? My name's Robert Neely. I live on Hollins Landing Road, twenty ninety-seven. Uh, we love to ride our golf carts, uh, we got kids, but the pit bulls are a big problem, and it seems nobody in the county can give an answer how this can be done. We've been to animal control, we go to sheriff's department. My grandson got attacked with my great piranhas. Luckily, it got broke up, went away. My wife, basically, had my knees done, was walking in, got attacked. We did a police report, no follow-up, nether, by the county. Then, I'm walking, I get attacked by the same pit bull. When the follow-up, I go to sheriff's department, I show my butt, on the way out the door, the lieutenant shows up, listens to me. Well, by the time I get back to Newberry, or I had said, I gotta go Chapin, I'm going home. He promised me, uh, the sheriff, and animal control would be there. They were. So, it was a warning, this was two, three weeks after the report. The guy came to my house that night, did a report, said, I don't wanna go in that yard because of that dog, but I'll come back tomorrow in the daylight. Never happened. But the problem we're running into is, it's four houses that is a problem, and they all got pit bulls between the road and that front door. Now, I don't have evidence, I can't prove it, but the sheriffs and stuff that we talked to, we know why they're there, there's a reason. It's more than just the theft and other things going on, the way these guys, people are living. But, we got kids on our block now that just moved in. And a pit bull, if y'all have ever seen one get a hold of somebody, you ain't gonna get him loose. You know, it ain't gonna happen, they're dead. So, we need something done, but we need people to follow up, animal control, the sheriff's department. We need somebody to follow up and change these rules. At the same time, when I got attacked, that's when the lady's dog killed her in Newberry County. Okay, and this was somewhere else. But that's what's going on with these dogs. But we got to, uh, we gotta do something. You know, and the living, we love to ride around, and we can't do it safely. I carry a stick with me, it's a couple of carry guns with me. Something's gonna happen, and an honest, good working person's gonna regret what they do. So, something needs to be done. You know, follow up on this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. D. Anyone else?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Bill Henderson, and I live in Sun, one seventeen Sunview Road. My wife and I, we moved there in December of twenty twenty, and the property was down there at that time, and it was a mess back then. In the, in the short time that we've been there, it's, it's a mess to the point that it's not healthy down there. The dogs run around, the gentleman mentioned the dogs, that is a fact. Uh, they run, they run free around that neighborhood. Uh, we've got the transients and the, uh, uh, the homeless people, they're homeless, and the poor guys, we don't know what to do for them. There are at least four, possibly five properties, by all rights, should be condemned. They're not habitable, and they're certainly not salvageable. The Wilsons, there's two properties on the old P and L Landing property that the Wilson brothers have said they were gonna come and bulldoze down. But there's still a single wide, a double wide, that, that, they, they attract, they attract this, this kind of lifestyle. And I, I just don't know what to do about it. Um, no water down there, certainly D Heck should be involved. They're, they're dumping sewage on the ground, they've been cited for that. The young lady with the trailer that you saw, she was dumping her sewage on the ground. They finally got her out of there. But, but it's, it's, it's nasty. It is truly nasty.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay?
I first would like to ask the first lady's, what her name was?
Jennifer Hawkins.
Okay, thank you.
I spoke with you a year ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Jennifer Coleman, and I live at one fifty-seven Sunview Road, and I just wanna take the time to say thank you guys for allowing us to come before you and hearing us plead our case. We have reached out, all the residents on our street have reached out to several other entities trying to get help for this, and we've just reached dead ends every which way we turn. At the point, it is very inhabitable down there, it is unsafe, it is dangerous. None of us feel safe living in our properties. We can't walk down there, it's bad enough to have to drive through there to get our residents. So we are just pleading for any kind of help that we can receive in any form or fashion that would be. I did wanna let you guys know that I reached out to Sheriff Foster yesterday. He returned my phone call immediately, and actually had a deputy call me today. So, hopefully that there'll be some help in getting us some, at least at the very least, law enforcement presence down there, more so than usual. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and please consider our concerns and complaints. This, I know, I know it's all over Newberry County, but this is pretty bad, and it's not getting any better, it's actually escalating. So we're at the point that we feel unsafe. Those folks are unsafe living there, so just any help that you guys can give us, we would greatly appreciate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Someone else?
Thank you so much. Uh, we can get together and get a plan of action, Mr. Shaker, as far as getting animal control to follow up, back up about those pit bulls, uh, also with the zoning department, and I know some other things that we're gonna have to do is look at, uh, some, some language in our statutes that's gonna allow us to take more action as well. So, um, like, as the, the last lady who spoke, and, and I'm sorry, the name left me that quick.
James.
Names do that to me as I've gotten older, but, uh, you, you are correct. This is a county-wide issue, certainly not minimizing the impact that it's had on you all, and, and we wanna address those concerns, but, but we have this, uh, uh, Mr. Shaker and I got complaints from two different people about some of this property on one twenty-one that last week alone, so we both went and took a look at it. So, we hear you, uh, and, and our, our commitment is to try to make this better countywide, a, and certainly address your situation as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank y'all for coming tonight. This is what makes government work, and we appreciate y'all bringing this to our attention. Moving on, uh, uh, number four, ordinance number oh-four-oh-two, twenty twenty-three. It's an ordinance acting on a request to amend the official zoning map, pre, established pursuant to zoning ordinance number one-two-two-four-zero-one, as revised and amended by zoning ordinance number oh-six-one-one-one-six and codified in chapter one fifty-three of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishes zoning classifications and districts so as to rezon one real estate parcel totaling two-point-eight-five acres designated as TMS number three-nine-nine-dash-two-five from RS Single, Family Residential to R-two Rural. This is the public hearing. I hereby declare the public hearing open. So anyone who would like to speak as a part of the public hearing, either for or against this ordinance? Hearing none unless there's objection from the remainder of council, I declare the public hearing closed. Hearing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion related to third reading?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, this be third reading, is there a second? Second by Reverend Skur, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise, carries unanimously. Congratulations, sir. We look forward to seeing your business there. Item number five on our agenda is ordinance number oh-five-dash-oh-six-dash-two-zero-two-three. An ordinance to authorize the county of Newberry by Newberry County Council to sell real estate located on Pine Hill Circle between TMS number three-four-oh-dash-one-dash-ten and TMS number three-four-oh-dash-one-dash-fifteen, and described on exhibit A, which is incorporated within the ordinance by reference to the successful bidder upon such terms and conditions as described in the request for bid. This is the second reading. Is there a motion related to second reading?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Airwood, second by Mr. Sees. Is there any discussion related to this matter? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, carries unanimously. Item number six on our agenda is ordinance number oh-five-oh-seven-two-zero-two-three, which is an ordinance acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number one-two-dash-two-four-dash-oh-one as revised and amended by zoning ordinance number zero-six-dash-one-one-dash-one-six and codified in chapter one fifty-three of the Newberry County Ordinances, establishing zoning classifications and districts as to rezon two real estate parcels totaling three-point-nine-two acres designated as TMS number three-three-nine-dash-three-dash-six-dash-one and TMS number three-three-nine-dash-three-dash-six-dash-two from GC General Commercial to RSM Single Family Residential.
Uh, I respect, or, uh, request recusal.
Yes, sir. Mr. Uh, Shealy has prepared a recusal statement, which we will make part of our official record, um, as, as an exhibit. Is there a motion related to this being second? And what, do, do say, we, we have a quorum.
We still have a quorum.
Bear it, but we still have a quorum. All right. Motion by Mr. Sees and second by Ms. Airwood, is there any discussion? All in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise, carries unanimously. Somebody wanna grab Mr. Shealy for us? All right. Yeah. Um, ordinance, item number seven on our agenda is ordinance number zero-five-zero-eight-dash-two-zero-two-three. An ordinance to provide appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-four, for the Newberry County budget, for county ordinary purposes, and for other- and for other county purposes for which the county may level at a tax and receive revenues to provide for the levy of taxes on all taxable personal and real property in Newberry County, for all county purposes, including sufficient tax to pay the principal and interest on outstanding indebtedness of Newberry County payable during said fiscal year, to provide for matters relating to Newberry County, and to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues received by the county during said fiscal year, and to provide for borrowing in anticipation of tax collections by the issuance of one or more tax anticipation notes if necessary. This is our second reading, is there a motion related to second reading? We have a motion by Mr. Shealy for this be second reading. There's a second, Ms. Airwood makes the second, that this be second reading. Uh, Mr. Shaker?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council.
This, okay. Can everybody hear me?
I don't think so.
Let's, uh, maybe we can do this one. How about now?
Now.
I can hear that one. Um, well, I just, really quickly, I just wanted to go over a few, uh, changes that were made to the budget, uh, between first and second reading, and we had discussions about this at your, uh, May 10th, uh, budget work session, which was our final work session. Uh, and I just thought I'd highlight those changes, um, to refamiliarize y'all with them, but then also for the benefit of those who are present with us today and, uh, may be watching the live stream of the meeting. Uh, the general fund, and there's a memo that's up on the, uh, on the screen now that I'm referring to, uh, the general fund operating budget is proposed, uh, to, uh, uh, increase by $20,100 between first and second reading, so we're proposing that it would go from, uh, $32,887,071 to $32,907, uh, $907,071. Uh, just really butchered that, but basically from, uh, uh, 32.88 million to 32.9 million, that's much easier for me to say. Um, but we've got some revenue changes that, uh, we'd like to highlight for you really quickly. Uh, we're proposing a $50,000 increase in FIALU tax revenue, uh, we're, we're very confident in that, we've spoken with, uh, the county auditor, Ms. Donna Lomenick, and, and she's comfortable with it as well. Uh, there's a corresponding $50,000 decrease in the manufacturer's reimbursement, uh, which, uh, both, uh, Debbie Cromer, our finance director, and Ms. Lomenick support. Um, you know, the manufacturer's reimbursement is a funding, uh, is funding that we receive from the state of South Carolina, it's for additional depreciation, uh, for manufacturers and their equipment. Um, and the way that that funding source works, there's essentially a pie, that pie gets divvied up based on depreciation within counties, which can vary from year to year for, uh, manufacturers. If we've lost it again. Okay, try that again, all right. Um, and so, you know, it, it's a little bit of a moving target, so we're recommending to you a little more conservative, uh, approach with it, where we would reduce it by $50,000. Um, also, the, uh, the local government fund, we were notified by... Uh, we were notified by the Association of Counties of a...
Try the other one.
All right, let's try the other one. Sorry about the technical difficulty there, I think that's an operator error. Um, we were notified by the Association of Counties that there's a slight increase in the local government fund that we can expect in FY 2324. Uh, the local government fund, it was a, uh, some funding that the cities and counties received from the state of South Carolina as replacement revenue for taxes that cities and, cities and counties used to, uh... Oh, okay. All right. That may be, may be the problem. Um, it was a source of replacement revenue, uh, for taxes that cities and counties no longer collect, that the state of South Carolina, uh, began collecting. And, um, it was set, uh, based on a percentage of the state's budget. Unfortunately, for many years, it was underfunded, a new normal was established, and that new normal is now indexed to increases in state general revenues, uh, and capped at 5%. We'll receive the full benefit of a 5% increase, 'cause as you can imagine, the state of South Carolina's revenues have increased, uh, because they're very, uh, they're, uh, very much attached to the economy, they're very elastic with sales tax and income tax revenue, and of course, they've expanded with the environment that we're now in. So, local government fund revenues proposed to increase from first rev- uh, first reading to second reading by a little over $1,000. Uh, similarly, the rural stabilization fund, which is an allocation of state funding that we receive as a rural county, uh, will increase from first to second reading, uh, by, uh, almost $5,600, uh, $5,593. Um, also, there is a supplement that our elected officials receive for salary from the state of South Carolina, and we were notified that the salary supplement for coroners statewide, for all 46 coroners in South Carolina, will increase from, um, $1,575 to $15,000. And so, the, the net of all those changes I just mentioned is a $20,100 increase in operating revenue, proposed for 2324. All the other revenue sources, uh, that we're proposing to you for FY 2324 budget remain the same, and so that would bring us to the, to the $32.9 million that I mentioned. In terms of expenditures, uh, just really quickly, uh, we had a number of, uh, changes. Uh, the net of those, though, is just the $20,100, so it, it just completely offsets the revenue that, that I mentioned earlier. Uh, but in the assessors department, you'll notice that there's a $180,000, uh, decrease in expenditures from first to second reading. That is a reflection of, uh, the, uh, decision that council is considering to postpone reassessment by a year. Uh, there are postage and printing expenses that, uh, we had originally proposed in first reading that would not be necessary with reassessment not moving forward this year, assuming council moves forward with, uh, the one-year delay, which is allowed by state law. Um, additionally, there was a $100,000 capital outlay in the assessors budget for the scanning of property cards, and we've got, uh, over 35,000 property cards, if I'm remembering correctly. Uh, Liz McDonald could clarify that number for us, but, um, we're actually gonna be able to accomplish that project within the existing budget using a contractor that is on state contract, and we can do it for less than $50,000. So, we'll be able to bring the project well, uh, below what we originally, uh, estimated for it, and accomplish it this year. So, we're recommending a $180,000 reduction in the assessors budget for next year, first to second reading. Um, in non-departmental, uh, we're proposing a $30,000, um, increase in, uh, in contracts. And that $30,000 increase from first to, to second reading would be to participate in the, uh, a master plan for Lake Greenwood that the, uh, Greenwood County is undertaking. They've asked us to be a funding partner, along with Lawrence County and a number of utility providers in the area, as well as an active, uh, participant in the process, which is really their main interest. Uh, they certainly would, would take the contribution, it's about a hundred, uh, $2,000 project, but they really want us to be involved in the planning process. So, we've recommended $10,000, uh, funding for, for next year, um, for that study, and then also... So, that we undertake a branding project next fiscal year, and the, the objective of that project would be the development of a new, uh, logo for the county, and then also, um, some, uh, recommendations from a consultant on how the logo could be utilized. It really would be sort of an umbrella of, uh, of brands that we could use on the website, uh, in social media, and, um, uh, in other avenues with, uh, with different... Marketing. Um, so that would increase the non-departmental division from first to second reading by 30,000. I already mentioned the coroner's supplement in the revenue section, that has a corresponding change in the expenditure section. Uh, we're recommending to you a, uh, a $21,230 increase in contract services in collections, which is our solid waste convenient, uh, centers, and we're just recommending to you that, um, the funding to the Newberry County Council on AG and B increase, so that they can give those workers at the convenience centers a pay increase. Um, quarterly payments are projected to be lower from first to second reading for medic-, uh, uh, medically intelligent, uh, services, that's, uh, we're no- uh, we're recommending an increase in, uh, contingency of $140,105, and that brings expenditures to 32.9 million, uh, like I mentioned, a $20,100 increase. Um, the only other major, uh, or two major changes I'd like to mention to you, the first is in the, uh, capital projects fund, we're recommending a $500,000 increase both in revenue and expenditures for, uh, Mid-Carolina Commerce Park Phase 2. Uh, there was a roadway that was necessary as part of that project, of course, Phase 2, you know, is home to Day Young now, one of our, uh, important industries and significant industries here in Newberry County, uh, to be necessary for, for council to budget in 20, in 2324, uh, $500,000 for completion of that roadway. We thought that we could accomplish the project in the current year, so it was not in the proposed budget for next year, but we won't be able to finish it. So, we're recommending that, uh, we're recommending that that $500,000 be inserted into next year's budget, so we can, uh, complete that project. And then finally, in the debt service fund, which is the last section, we're proposing a $160,000 decrease from first to second reading, and that is a reflection of us, uh, not pursuing additional debt. Uh, you know, there, there had been some thought about us, uh, recommending to you that we do a lease purchase financing for a fire engine, uh, and that we lease purchase a portion of it, um, and that we fund the remainder, the balance of the cost of the truck with American Rescue Plan Act funding, uh, but we're recommending at this point that we not do that, that we maintain the debt service levy at the current 5.1 mils, I'll look over at Debbie, make sure I got that number right, and, um, and that we reevaluate options for the purchase of the truck, to include possibly using ARPA. But we feel a lot more comfortable making a recommendation to you on how to fund the truck, once we've gotten our arms around what the, uh, uh, the S, the, uh, the updated estimates will be for our capital project sales tax projects. And to do that, we'll need to engage professionals to engineer the projects and then cost estimate them. So, I know that was a mouthful, it's basically, uh, a $160,000 decrease in debt service, a $500,000 increase in capital projects, and a $20,100 increase in operating revenue and expenditures.
Thank you, Mr. Shaker.
Thank you.
Just, um, for those who weren't with us last Wednesday night, we had a work session where these were handled much more granularly, this is kind of an overview to kind of show how we got here, but that work session, um, we handled those in a, in a more in-depth manner. Are there any questions from council? Any discussion? Uh, it, before voting, I would just say that, uh, I would abstain from any portions of the budget that are related to Nicholson Business Systems or to WTH Technology. Other than that, uh, plan to vote on the remainder of the budget, okay? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote, all in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise, that carries unanimously. Um, oh, item number eight is ordinance number 0509-2023, which is an ordinance to provide appropriations for the fiscal year be- beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, for the Newberry County Library, Piedmont Technical College, and Newberry Agency for Disabilities and Special Needs, to provide for the levy of taxes on all taxable personal and real estate properties in Newberry County for said purposes, and to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues by the county during said fiscal year for said purposes. This is second reading, is there a motion related to second reading? Reverend Curry makes a motion, this be second reading, uh, Ms. Airwood makes the second, is there any discussion? I believe anything has changed on this budget, so, uh, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, that carries unanimously. Item number nine on our agenda is ordinance number 05-01-2023. An ordinance to postpone the implementation of revised values resulting from reassessment and equalization. Is there a motion, this be second reading? Mr. Shealy makes that motion, is there a second? Ms. Airwood makes that motion, is there discussion? Um, hearing none, I, I, y'all were gonna get tired of hearing this, I said it last time, and I'm gonna say it again, I, I, I do have reservations about this, I'm, I'm agreeing to go along with it, because I think the only thing worse than doing a, uh, postponing this would be to do an evaluation when we weren't staffed and doing it right, and having a, a mess on our hands because of that. But, uh, I, I, I would charge that by next time, this, we need to have our ducks in a row, and this needs to, needs to happen on the schedule, so. I, I'm doing it, but I, I just wanna put that caveat on it. Anybody else?
I have the same sentiments, you know, I don't think we have the staff that do a, um, a, a job that would, um, satisfy our county residents, and if we mess it up, we're not gonna have some happy people, so we need to make sure we have the people in place to do it right.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, carries unanimously. Appointments, are there any appointments? I have one, I would like to appoint, uh, Rodney Wicker to the Board of Rural Fire Control. You, I make the motion, is the second by Mr. Shealy, is any discussion? All in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, thank you for that. Any other appointments? Hearing none, public comments, no one has signed up for public comments. Next on our agenda is the, uh, executive session, and I, I wanted to do this, and I'm, I'm remiss that I didn't do it earlier, but I would like to, uh, acknowledge, uh, that this is National Police Week, and so, we certainly, um, as a council, are indebted to our law enforcement and all that they do. Um, I, I'm old school enough to believe that the law enforcement is still our heroes, uh, and the men and women out there are doing a great job in a perilous time and under some of the worst circumstances that they could. So, Sheriff Foster and staff, thank you so much for all that you do to make Newberry County the safest place in South Carolina.
Absolutely.
Uh, anybody else wanna say anything, they certainly can?
We got the best.
Yep, thanks for your great service. I always tell him, how much you put in, it's gonna get paid for, God bless you.
That's right.
There's kind of a saying, don't let them come through Newberry County, the boxer will get them.
That's right. All right, so now we have, uh, executive session scheduled for, uh, personnel matter and legal matters, so we will, is there a motion that we move into executive session? Motion by Mr. Shealy and second by Mr. Sees, is there discussion? All in favor by show of hands, we stand in executive session.
We come out of executive session, motion by Mr. Sees, second by Ms. Airwood, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, it is unanimous we are out of executive session. Item 13 is any action on the executive session, no action was taken. I'm sorry, Newbury County met in executive session for the aforementioned reasons, no action was taken. Are there any motions related to the executive session? Hearing none, comments from the county administrator?
Yes sir, I'll keep them brief. Would just would like to remind you, we, and you can see this in the future meeting section, but on June 14th, there is a meeting that will be held for the Newbury-Richland Boundary Clarification Project. And I just got an email actually this afternoon that it will only be virtual. I know we talked with them about doing something in person, it's just sort of the way it worked out. But there will be a phone option, I can get that information out to y'all if you'd like to either participate by phone or to do the Zoom meeting. But, and I can get you some more information too on what the impact of the proposed changes will be in advance of the meeting. The other item is the Economic Development Strategic Plan. We've reviewed the plan, there were a few modifications that we suggested to the consultant and she's actually finished those, I've got a copy of it and they'll be prepared to present it to council on June 7th at your meeting if y'all are comfortable with that. And that'll bring that project to a close and then we'll move into implementation of it. And then the third item I wanted to mention to y'all is that we were just notified, Jesse was, that we got the Recreation Trails Program grant for improvements to Lynch's Woods. This is a $44,400 grant, the match requirements is 20%, so that's $11,100. So we'll have a $55,500 project we'll do there, a lot of really great components to it, and she's got some additional work she's lining up to have done at the part two using our staff, so we'll keep you apprised of that.
Awesome.
Yep.
Comments and requests from council, Mr. Shealy?
As always, good job staff, keep up the good work.
Mr. Sees?
Same here, good job, appreciate all your hard work, keep it up.
Ms. Airwood?
Same, same here.
Reverend Kerr? Oh, sorry. Reverend Kerr?
Just nice work riding you kind of mountains, Quater.
Oh, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, future meetings, Finance Committee meeting May 30th at 6:00 PM, Executive Committee meeting June 5th at 6:00 PM, County Council meeting June 7th at 6:00 PM, Economic Development meeting June 12th at 6:00 PM, the mentioned, as already mentioned, the Newbury-Richland County Boundary meeting on June 14th at 6:00 PM, and then County Council meeting on June 21st at 6:00 PM. Mr. Shealy makes a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Second by Mr. Sees, is there any discussion? All in favor by show of hands, we stand adjourned.